I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
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 This is a lot.
It's not a tornado warning. I had enough of those for a month.
If Hollis, unless Hollis, half your staff is like, because they got to pay them anyways. If people want them, they'll come pick them up. Ooh, I think we're getting ready to get started.
You there? Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, uh, where we at? August 24th board meeting. We'll, the first item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. We have a student here from...
Yes.
From where?
Mr. Meek, I would like to introduce, this is, this is one of the favorite parts of my job as representing the Northwest area of Greenville County. Tonight, because we have a special, not only is he special because he's from District 19, but also because, um, we, we have a little story behind, um, his being here tonight. If you will remember, tonight, we're going to welcome Tripp Cowherd. He is a seventh grade student at Northwest Middle School. And in March of 2020, when he was an outstanding fifth grader at Gateway Elementary School, Tripp was invited to lead the pledge at the board's monthly meeting. But we all remember what happened in March of 2020. COVID struck, and due to the shutdown, we had to cancel, um, his appearance at the meeting that night. So it's only appropriate, and we are thrilled that Tripp and his family and his new principal, Mr. Daniel Green, are all here with us tonight. Can I ask Tripp's family if you, if you would mind standing so we can recognize you two? All right. And, um, um, as we resume our practice of bringing in students to lead us in the pledge. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Tripp. He is a straight A student. He plays in the North, that's good, give applause for that. He plays in the Northwest Band, and he is a member of the Travelers Rest High School Football D Team. He is outgoing, respectful, and friendly to all. His ambition is to, our superintendent will be very happy to hear that, to attend Clemson University to study aerospace engineering. And after that, he is going to create the world's fastest plane or rocket. So you can all say that you are here tonight and you were able to meet Tripp Cowherd, the inventor of the plastus, the fastest plane or rocket. So if you will, please, Tripp, lead us in the pledge.
Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tripp. If everybody remains standing for the prayer, Dr. Stiles.
May we pray. Dear heavenly Father, you are a loving and gracious God, the giver of all good gifts. We thank you tonight for our many blessings, and especially for the fact that we have been entrusted to serve our most precious resource, our children. Help us to remember our focus and our decisions should always place them front and center. Father, we also thank you for our teachers, our staff, our parents, and our communities. We ask that you bless them with an abundant measure of grace and wisdom as we face the obstacles and challenges of unprecedented times. Father, we pray you remove any spirit of strife that may exist among us tonight and help us to respect and value the opinion of others. Be with us in our deliberations. Give us the insight that is needed to make wise and prudent decisions. Direct us away from short-sightedness and pettiness and guard us from blind self-interest. Lead us, Father, in thy path. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a second, Mr. Sailors. Yeah. The first item on the agenda, or second item on the agenda, is adoption of consent calendar is her motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Before we go to the appearance of visitors, uh, in the consent calendar, I think there was some new hires, Dr. Royster.
Pastor, we'd like to introduce, uh, to the board, uh, two new assistant principal appointees. First, Nicholas King, who is the newly appointed assistant principal, Simpsonville Elementary School. King, congratulations on your appointment. Uh, you have, you have someone with you? Uh, glad to have you here as well. Congratulations. Mr. King is moving into this job, having served as an AA at Plain Elementary School, and prior to that, as a teacher at Bethel, and prior to that, as a teacher at West Pelzer. Congratulations on your new leadership role.
Thank you so much. Have the pleasure.
Thank you. Our second introduction, Damian Williams, assistant principal, Hollis Academy. Uh, Mr. Williams comes to us, uh, having served as the dean of students at Gunn Elementary School in Charlotte. Uh, prior to that, he was a teacher in Richland District Two and a teacher in Orangeburg County. So, Mr. Williams, welcome both to Greenville County and to your new leadership role at Hollis Academy. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. The next item on the agenda is appearance of visitors. Tonight, we have quite a few visitors. I think the last count was 36. The, our policy allows for speakers three minutes each. Our policy also allows that we only, uh, listen to one hour of speakers, and I think if I, my math is correct, it's 108 minutes, we would be much over that. Mr. Sailors.
Mr. Meek, I make a motion to suspend policy KCA for this evening and allow all the speakers to speak at one time.
Well, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the motion, say aye, or I think nay. Hearing none, all, if the motion carries. Okay. Let me read our script for public comments that we like our, uh, attendees to abide by. Welcome to those who have signed up to speak tonight before the Board of Trustees, and thank you for your interest in Greenville County Schools. Before we begin, I will ask the Board Secretary to remind each speaker of the procedures we expect all guests to abide by tonight. Dr. Stiles.
As each speaker... As each speaker's name is called, he or she should proceed to the podium to my right at the end of the board's desk, where there is a microphone and light system. Each speaker has up to three minutes to speak to the board. The light system will be green for the first two minutes and will turn yellow when one minute remains on the speaker's allotted time. In keeping with board policy KCA, abusive language or personal attacks aimed at students or staff members will not be permitted. All speck, all speakers are expected to behave in an orderly and respectful manner. The board will not engage in discussion with the speaker or respond to comments. The superintendent will designate a member of the staff to respond to each speaker in an appropriate and timely manner.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Our first speaker tonight is Aaron Simmons.
I'm the father of a sixth grader. I'm also a professor of philosophy. I recognize the incredibly difficult position you find yourselves in. Education requires that our schools be places of safety. This means that we protect students from such threats as drugs, bullies, discrimination, and the effects of poverty. In the midst of these difficult times, drugs, bullies, discrimination, and poverty all unfortunately remain, but they are now accompanied by a pervasive and immediately pressing health concern. Among healthcare professionals, there is no question about what protecting our children requires. However, we all know that South Carolina Budget Proviso 1.108 stands in direct violation of the recommendations of not only the CDC, but also the South Carolina Department of Humans, excuse me, DEH. Those calling for the repeal of this proviso range the political spectrum from the American Civil Liberties Union to the South Carolina Parent Teachers Association. Two days ago, as I was putting my son to bed, he looked at me with tears in his eyes and said that if he had known how anxious he would feel sitting in classes with so many unmasked, he would have stayed virtual. This violates his right to learn without being in fear. Overcoming the fear of discrimination and the effects of poverty are very hard, but overcoming the fear of unmasked classmates and teachers is easy to address. While I was waiting outside, I received notification that another child in my son's class is now COVID positive. Look, I fight a bear to protect my son. Requiring masks is such a small thing. As a philosopher, let me mention that there are two common arguments against mask mandates. Both depend on fallacies and reasoning. The first is that requiring masks during a global pandemic restricts freedom, but this predict, forgets that the schools are public spaces marked by restrictions on some freedoms in the name of protecting the basic liberties guaranteed to everyone. At schools, parents have to check in at the office to visit. ID is required to pick up their children. Immunization records are required to enroll. Weapons are not allowed, et cetera. Rather than restricting liberty, such public safety measures are what condition it. What you believe to be true is a private matter, but if you act on those beliefs in public spaces in ways that threaten the lives of others, then it is no longer a matter of personal choice, but a matter of public concern. The second argument is specific to school boards who claim that they are not able to do anything about masks until the proviso is changed. This assumes that contingent legislation enacts real necessity. It does not. Part of the public charge to leaders is to stand against injustice, even when perpetuated by those in power. Yes, standing in this way will come at cost, but remember that there is no excuse of immoral behavior by claiming that one was simply following orders. The same is true for following budget provisos. Indeed, I am sure that we all wish many school boards of the past had found the moral fortitude to stand against such provisos that supported segregation. True confidence requires genuine humility. Our state leaders are refusing to show such humility in light of the Delta variant. Please stand against the injustice facilitated by power and for the basic liberties of health, safety, and well-being. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Our next speaker is my good friend, Pastor Christine Matthews.
Mr. Chairman Meek, Dr. Royster, my name is Christine Matthews. I am a mother to an 11-year-old student, 11-year-old daughter, at Greenville Middle School. She's a sixth grader. I am a Christian, a child advocate, and a pastor. I am speaking in favor of requiring masks in Greenville County schools. I would like to present an analogy. Last October, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. I listened to my doctors because they are the experts about that. My doctors explained the cost-benefit analysis of my treatment options. It was all about how to get rid of the cancer, but also about how to keep it from coming back. They recommended surgery, then chemo, then radiation. And I listened to my doctors and had all three of those things because it was my best chance to stay healthy. Doing all of those things, surgery, chemo, and radiation, was not fun, but it was necessary. It was a multifaceted approach to fight and beat the cancer, and I am now, very recently, cancer-free. I don't do things halfway. I have done everything I possibly could do to fight and beat the cancer and to keep it from coming back. Here is the analogy. We need to do everything that we possibly can do to fight and beat COVID. We need to listen to the doctors and the scientists because they are the experts. They have done all the cost-benefit analysis for us, and they recommend vaccines and masks and quarantining when exposed or sick and distancing. If we want to be free of COVID, then we are going to have to do all of these things. Doing all of these things is not fun, but it is necessary. Let's not do things halfway. Let's do everything that we can possibly do to fight and beat COVID and to keep it from coming back. Let's protect our children and do everything we can do to protect them from getting and spreading COVID, and that includes a mask mandate in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Christine. Next speaker, Elizabeth Wright.
Hello, trustees. My name is Elizabeth Wright. I have two children at Stone Academy Elementary School, which they adore. I was very impressed with the measured approaches that you all implemented last year to bring our students gradually and safely back to in-person learning, and I thank you for your wise guidance in the past on that. This year, I know we are all burdened by the state budget proviso that masks cannot be required in schools, but I have been surprised that it is not just masks that are lacking in our schools this year. It appears to be any acknowledgement that there is a pandemic going on in our midst. I can't get an answer from teachers or administrators about handwashing, cafeteria protocols, any social distancing. It appears that the entire topic of precautions to protect our children from COVID is off the table for discussion. It's something that we have to come to you to talk about, so here I am. With all due respect, this is insanity, and more importantly, it is extremely dangerous to the students and staff that you are here to protect. My children wear their masks at school with joy because they are protecting themselves and their community. It is not a big ass. This is not a political issue. This is a health and safety issue. A minority of parents has been speaking out loudly against masks, but they do not represent the majority view in Greenville County. The rest of us are terrified by the school's lack of precautions. If some parents are not concerned about other things like active shooters, would you stop doing drills and enforcing precautions of screening visitors and locking classrooms? No, protection from active shooters is a community danger, and everyone has to participate in the precautions and the drills, whether they are personally concerned or not. It's the same with COVID. Perhaps some people already had it or don't feel concerned, but the schools need to be safe for everyone. As the ACLU so clearly stated in their suit against the South Carolina government, making the schools unsafe for children with health issues is not the answer. It is our duty to work together to protect the common good and safeguard the vulnerable, especially our children. Even if we are not prepared now to mandate that everyone wear masks, we can still prioritize common sense, health, and safety measures in our school. We could send home flyers asking parents to watch out for symptoms. We are allowed to encourage masking. We could spread out the tables in classrooms, put the plexiglass back in. We could separate students in lines at dismissal. I looked in yesterday at dismissal, and the students were packed into the hallway like sardines, shoulder to shoulder, jostling to the door. That's not necessary. If we do not take precautions, our children will be the ones to suffer with their health. Everyone under 12 is unvaccinated, and the Delta variant attacks children in greater numbers than before, as we've seen in Alabama, Florida, Louisiana. Their pediatric hospitals are at capacity. This is not the flu. This is a new and highly contagious disease that we don't know much about, and we need to defend ourselves in every way possible. Further, ignoring the pandemic and allowing the case count to skyrocket will make it increasingly difficult to keep our schools open and staff with teachers. If we have learned one thing from last year's experience, it is that children do best in school, not on a computer screen at home. And increasing the precautions in our school will help us all be able to stay in person at our schools where our children and teachers want to be.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michelle Simpson.
Good evening, and thank you very much for your time. My name is Michelle Simpson. I've lived in the Five Forks area for about 15 years, and I'm a leader at a Fortune 500 company in town that employs thousands of people. Never before have I felt so compelled to come and speak to the board as I have today. But when I see that this board and the school system are potentially failing and abdicating their most basic responsibility, it's too much, and I need to speak up. I'm an engineer. I'm trained in examining evidence and solving problems. As I consider the information available to me from credible sources, it is abundantly clear that wearing masks is an effective way and an easy way to reduce the spread of COVID-19. On July 27th, the CDC issued an updated guidance on wearing masks. Given the rapid spread of the Delta variant, they are recommending that masks be worn in indoor spaces in areas with significant or high transmission rates, places like Greenville County. The science says that wearing masks reduces the spread of this deadly virus. The science says the Delta variant is more transmissible than the virus we faced a year ago. The science says that children are more likely to get the Delta variant than to get the variant that we were dealing with a year ago. Science is not political. It is based on evidence and facts, and if we have a prayer of overcoming this virus, we must follow the science. How can we teach scientific thinking in our classrooms but not follow the best recommendations of the scientific community when it comes to the health and safety of our children? This body is, is charged with ensuring our children, the most precious resource in our community, get a quality education. But your most fundamental, most basic, most important responsibility is to keep those children safe. You do everything you can to protect our students from mass shooters. You install metal detectors. You require students and teachers to wear identification. You lock the doors, you employ, employ security guards. You don't allow students to possess women, uh, sorry, to possess weapons on campus. You do a pretty good job of protecting our students from that type of danger. Why would you not do everything you could reasonably to protect them from a deadly virus? At this time, short of going back to fully virtual schooling, mask, masking is the best option you can offer. It's the best protection you can offer. It's a mask. It's a simple piece of cloth. Is it comfortable to wear for long periods? No. No. Show me the signs. It is not. It is not about a little discomfort. This is literally about life and death. You think it's unhealthy to wear a mask? Try being on a ventilator. Please, this is deadly. I realize the governor's threatening you, but you were elected to lead. You were elected to do the right thing. You were elected to protect our children.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Next speaker is Catherine McAlefe.
My name is Catherine McKelvin. I started my career as a public school teacher in the state of North Carolina. I taught middle and high school. And now, I serve as the executive director of a nonprofit that started 25 years ago as the Center for Teacher Formation. We now work with educators, with healthcare workers, with clergy, with nonprofit leaders, with all kinds of people who have been on the front lines over the last year and a half of fighting this virus. I say all that to say that I am well acquainted with the duty of care that every one of you serves under, and I'm well acquainted with the fact that that duty compels you to act in the best interests of our students and to provide for them and for all of the employees in our district a safe environment. I'm also here because this is my 13th year as a parent in the Greenville County school system. I have four children. They are at Stone Academy, League Academy, Wade Hampton, and the Fine Arts Center. These are places that are filled with Greenville County School District employees and students that we love. In all of these years, I have never appeared before this Board of Trustees. In all these years, I have never felt like I was sending my students, my precious children that we prayed for here tonight, into places where people were not creating a safe environment for them to be. But I send them there every day, knowing that they are not safe. I know that. You know that. We all know that there is more that we could be doing in our schools to keep our students safe from a virus that threatens our most vulnerable. Most of the students in our schools are unvaccinated. Many of the employees in your care are also unvaccinated, and all of them are vulnerable to suffering and to death. Other people have already talked about many things that I would want to say here in this place, but I think the thing that I most want for you to hear from me is a recognition that you have an enormously difficult responsibility. That's the responsibility to stand in the midst of a very chaotic and disorienting time in our, in the history of our world. And you have to stand in that place with a singular focus on the duty of care that you hold. It isn't only a legal responsibility, but it is a legal responsibility. It's also a moral and an ethical responsibility. To fail to enact reasonable precautions to keep students and employees in your schools safe is negligence, and we are headed down that path now with educators and with administrators who are afraid to enforce what they're hearing from all of our health agencies and organizations, the very clear recommendations that they are receiving. Please focus on your duty of care to keep our students and our staff safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAlefe. Our next speaker is Judith Tanzola.
I am Judith Tanzola from Simpsonville. I'm a retired South Carolina teacher, having taught in Lexington Middle School, the Department of Juvenile Justice, Centura College in Columbia, and lastly, at Lander University. I am here tonight to discuss something different. I'd like to discuss the merits of critical race theory and its value to possibly being taught in our district. Let me be blunt and direct. It has no merits or value. It is Marxist, communist in scope, and has no place in this district. Its Marxist teaching goes against our American Judeo-Christian principles and constitution. The sole purpose of CRT and its teachings is to make something somebody doesn't like into a statement of political value. Anything can be taught, uh, with, uh, uh, critical race theory, such as excelling in mathematics and, uh, science is white, and standards should be lowered, which is not true. Manners and courtesy are white. School board members, you need to know that it is being taught in this district right under your nose. right under your noses as social emotional learning, or SEL, which is the tool to teach CRT, turning impressionable students into leftist activists. If you look at the South Carolina ESER State Plan, you will see that the plan mentions SEL 71 times and also reveals the teacher training took place this past year. In July, the superintendent of Kershaw County Schools, Dr. Shane Robbins, told the local meeting that CRT is not being taught in their district. But culturally responsive teaching is. Sherri Few, president of the United States Parents Involved in Education, stated that it is the same exact teaching materials. I implore you not to word games and bring CRT into this district under a disguised name. Condoning worthless curriculum at taxpayers' expense is not what you should do. Bowing down to national political pressure from infringed group, and most importantly, perjuring the oath of office you took to uphold the state and national constitution, so help you God. As public officials, do you want to be known for promoting Marxism? Therefore, if you approve the inclusion of CRT in this district, please rest assured that it will be considered your legacy. Now do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanzola. Before we go any farther, let me apologize if I kill your names when I'm pronouncing your names. The next speaker is Talia Riddick-Waters.
Thank you. Well, I guess on a better note here. I'm just really here to thank you guys. First of all, my name is Talia Riddick-Waters. I'm here with Mental Health America of Greenville County. I don't know how many of you guys have seen these magnets, but we were in co-production with you all and making them. For those of you that can't see, Greenville County Schools calendar, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline number, our team line number, and then some cute emojis. But so we're just here again. Not a lot of people know about us. We've been in the community since 1955. It's a lot older than myself. But right now, we are the only call center here in South Carolina that answers calls for the National Suicide Lifeline. Sorry, there were four others, but they did have to close down due to funding. We currently don't receive any state funding for this, so it's very important. So it's really important because right now, our South Carolina suicide rates, both youth and overall, are above the national average, which is terrible. So because we answer calls, the youngest call that we had to intervene in, which means we send police or EMS, was seven. Previous year was nine. So this is a huge problem in our community. So right now, we are thankful for working with Rob Rhodes and his school counselors and therapists and social workers. We are thankful to Cliffs Resonance Outreach, who donated a couple thousand dollars for production of these magnets. So again, just wanted to thank you guys. Hopefully, anybody who's interested in coming to take a visit of our center, listening to any of our calls in our call room, or getting any educational classes, please let me know. Other than that, I'm hoping to leave some more at the front, if that's all right with you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick-Waters. Next speaker is Jeff Mag.
Good evening. I am completely puzzled how we got here with all this mask stuff. Without a shred of evidence, we have gone to a masked society. Just evidence by the fact there's 47 studies, just confirmed. I give you a list of them, where the ineffectiveness of masks and COVID and 32 more are confirmed of their negative health effects. And yet, we go around and wear masks like they're some answer to everything. It's not. And here's a few other examples. Fauci and the Spanish Flu. In the early 1900s, more died from bacterial pneumonia from wearing masks than Spanish Flu. That's Fauci's words, and I've got the article that shows that. The first quarter of 2021, the CDC admitted 94% of the deaths indicated as COVID deaths were not COVID deaths. That leaves 6% that were. Fauci said in May of 2020 it was not necessary to wear masks and gave a bunch of reasons why. And yet, we wear them. Last year, the CDC stated that over 80% of the people who were hospitalized were avid mask wearers. Yet, we wear them anyway. March 21st, World Health Organization states masks do not prevent viral infections. Quote, "Most boxes of masks say right on the..." This is the most puzzling thing to me. Right on the box of masks, we've got pictures of it. It says, quote, "These masks do not stop the spread of COVID-19 or any other virus." Says it right on the box of masks. Yet, we wear masks. How is that? It is puzzling to me. Okay, our oxygen level should be at 95% or higher. And if masks are worn for three minutes or more, it's been shown to reduce, to cause high blood pressure, headaches, dizziness, nerve damage to the heart, lungs, central nervous system. If a child during their developing age has nerve damage, it does not heal. It is permanent. Are kids wearing masks? The hospitals are empty with kids. There are no kids. And there were two hospitals, we just heard on the way over here. Not one kid from nurses that are inside the hospital. Yet, we're talking about kids wearing masks. It's crazy. You guys are doing the right thing. Keep on it. I appreciate that big time. I have a 17-year-old, and I love the fact that you guys are not requiring masks. Because do not do that. I appreciate that big time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mag. Next speaker is Atears Svezka.
Good evening. I'm here to remind everyone present of a value system where we place value on human beings and free will. I'm a South Carolina state delegate and a naturopathic doctor that places great emphasis on the inherent capabilities of the immune system. I am here to assert my rights and the rights of all people, regardless of age, and let it be known that subverted science will not be accepted by me or other members of the public that vote. Your jobs... I'm sorry. I would urge us all to educate ourselves, as well as our children, about our constitutional rights, our human rights, and the Nuremberg Code, which clearly outlines what is and is not acceptable regarding ethical medical behavior. Do you consider yourself scientifically qualified persons to be conducting health experiments on our children? Have you made proper preparations and provided adequate facilities to protect subjects against even remote possibilities of injury, disability, or death? Those are two of the Nuremberg Codes that are relevant to this time since masks are considered a medical device. I would like to cite a Stanford University study where the data found suggests that both medical and non-medical face masks are ineffective to block human-to-human transmission of viral and infectious disease such as SARS-CoV-2. The CDC's own data and Fauci's own words state that masks are ineffective. The CRT McIntyre Study of 14 randomized controlled trials also found that masks are ineffective. Health Canada has recalled surgical masks containing graphene. Wearing masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse effects such as hypoxia, hypercapnia, acidosis, toxicity, fungal infections, toxic air, activation of fear and stress response hormones, fatigue, headache, cognitive decline, immunosuppression, predisposition for viral and infectious disease. As we all know by now, very rarely does anyone wear a mask properly to ensure adequate protection. In fact, people, especially children, touch the mask the entire time, therefore increasing transmission of infection, thereby turning a mask into a vector. The standard surgical blue masks we see people wear are sprayed with PTFE, polyetrafluoroethylene, a highly toxic chemical that has been linked to cancer. I ask you for your courage to stand up and keep doing the right thing for our children. The ESER funding should not be the reason our children are forced to comply with immoral expectations. Children should not be used as targets in warfare and any agenda as we are the authority over our children and what medical choices our families choose to make. The state has no authority to make medical decisions for any person. There are millions of children being pulled from public schools this year because of human rights violations and tyrannical policies.
Thank you, Ms. Svezka.
And I assure you, our tax sellers that fund education will evaporate if medical freedom is...
Thank you. Next speaker is UNC Ranger.
Good evening, members of the school board and community members. As a nurse, a mom of elementary students, a nursing professor at a local university, I am extremely concerned about the fact that Greenville County does not have a mask mandate in our schools. Sure, masks are a hotbed topic these days, no doubt. But for elementary children who cannot be vaccinated, masks are one of the best protections against infection from COVID-19 in schools that we have. We know statistically that most children make full recoveries from COVID-19. But this doesn't mean that now is the time to ditch masks and other protective measures. While Greenville County had strong protective measures last year, kudos, now the more contagious Delta virus is spreading rapidly. When our children need the most protection, they're getting the least. Slowing the transmission of the Delta variant of COVID-19 will keep kids healthier, keep kids in schools, not quarantine, reduce the spread of COVID-19 in the community, and help our overwhelmed hospitals. By the way, Prisma's Memorial Hospital had no more beds yesterday, and they moved to their hallway policy. There are beds filling the hallways of Prisma Hospital. The proviso issued by the state legislature has threatened our school district that we could lose state funds by issuing mask mandates in our schools. But we see other counties, Richland, Charleston, Chester, taking the right steps to exercise political willpower and courage to protect our community and enact mask mandates. The advice to mandate masks in schools is backed by DHEAC, the superintendent, and the CDC. The President of the United States has stated that if any governor shall cut state funds for masking money from the American Relief Plan, can 100% be used to cover those shortfalls. Mark his words. But beyond the politics, the reality is, a mask is not political. A mask is not religious. A mask is a scientifically valid health and safety measure. Collaborative research from NC State, Georgia Tech, UNC, East Carolina predicts that in middle school setting without masking, the risk of contracting the Delta variant amongst susceptible students is 80% within 60 days of school starting.
Excuse me just a second. You have to leave your...
That number is reduced to 15%, a 65-point drop. Research by the CDC and Georgia compared...
Sorry, lady with the mask, if you show it up again, you'll need to leave. Keep it down. Keep it down if you want the mask. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Continue, please.
Research by the CDC and Georgia compared COVID-19 infection rates across 169 K5 schools. Researchers found that infection rates were 37% lower in schools where teachers and staff members were required to wear masks in particular. There's a lot of talk about choice these days. And believe me, liberty is something we do not want to lose. But as a parent, I can say I feel very little liberty dropping my kids off to a school where almost nothing is in place to protect them, even during a pandemic. No social distancing, minimal cohorting, no lunches outside, no open windows, and no masks. From a very concerned parent weighing the decision to pull my children out of the school district, as a nurse that knows that our healthcare members are exhausted, as a nurse educator who stood in my classroom today and told students about the value of prevention, I urge our school board to review the facts, act with courage and compassion, and please protect our children and our communities. Lives are at stake. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Luca Cassano.
How's it going? My name is Luca Cassano. I am 17 years old. I'm here because I realize the decisions you make are going to affect my life and the lives of the people that I care about, as well as the entire county. I wanted to come and speak about how forcing students, teachers, and other faculty members to wear masks is actually hurting them and others. Freshman year, I went to Travel Trust High School, and I absolutely loved it. Before going to TR, I had just moved from Denver and had already felt as if I had lost most of my friends and the people I knew. When I started there, I began to make a lot more friends, and I genuinely looked forward to waking up early and going to school. I had been at school for a few months, and then my dad passed away in December. I went through a rough time, and before things even started to feel normal again, everyone was quarantined. As a result of the quarantine, as I'm sure you remember, every student was forced to do virtual school. Last year, we were allowed to go to the school, but they forced you to wear masks. And because of that, my mom and I decided to do virtual school, and I hope by now, things will be back to normal. As we can see, COVID hasn't been affected at all by the people wearing masks, as well as the vaccine, although we were told originally two weeks to slow the spread. We are expected to trust the proclaimed authorities who continually change their stories, as well as your decisions that are affecting many lives in the Greenville County. We all have God-given rights, which includes God placing parents in authority over their children. No school board or government has the right to trample our rights that are outlined in the Constitution. As a matter of fact, our state is supposed to protect us from the federal overreach, and our local representatives are elected to protect us, the people, from overreach of the state. Our republic was formed so that the people would be protected from the government, and you were set in place to represent our position. As of recently, I have started to study the Constitution and realized how far our society has veered from what our founding fathers knew we needed. I know it may be difficult to remember, but the constant changes and the disruption in my life and others are emotionally challenging and to students my age and younger. To be completely honest, I feel that my life and the lives of my peers are being used as a political tool because there is a lot of evidence that already proves we are at a low-risk category. I understand there's a concern for our physical health, although scientific evidence doesn't prove that to be true. I personally believe that the psychological and emotional damage that this is causing is far greater and will affect us for many years to come. You are the gatekeeper to protect us, and I implore you, and I thank you for doing the right thing and protecting our freedoms.
Thank you, Ms. Cassano. Next speaker is Grace Pouch. Grace Pouch.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad I get to go after Luca so that I can honestly say that I respect your bravery in getting up and very well spoken. Thank you for hosting this forum for us to express our different opinions. It allows us to have our point of view heard, and I appreciate that opportunity to be heard and to hear from other people's opinions. I am the mother of two Greenville County school students. My husband is a Greenville County school teacher. I have been an adjunct professor at Erskine College and Theological Seminary. And what I would like to ask, despite saying thank you for this forum, is to ask you that after you've heard all the points of view, that you would not let the school board's action plan on COVID or on any health-related policy be determined by a community forum. This is not how we decide our position on any health-related matter, whether it be headlights or fire protocols. We, you guys, look to reputable bodies who can recommend the right action. And I think that I speak for those of us here on the side of mandating masks if possible, but if the proviso stays in place, at least strongly recommending them, to say that what we would like you to do is what you always do in these situations, to follow the guidelines that have been suggested by those who know. So I'm just going to keep it brief and leave it there, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pouch. Next speaker is Ethan Carpenter.
Hey there. Today, I wanted to talk about the potential of critical race theory, the 1619 Project, and the future of sex education landing in our school curriculums. Respectively, they are divisive, malcontented, and promote promiscuity. These concepts should not be taught to young children or anyone of any age. Those theories need to be left to the theorists and should not leave their desks and become founded parts of our school curriculums. Critical race theory embodies Marxism at its core with its fundamental precepts of a class struggle. But because the class struggle is non-existent in America, because there isn't a bourgeoisie and a proletariat to be pitted against each other, they intend to create a race struggle instead by opposing races against each other through the lens of oppressor versus oppressed. In the words of Ibram X. Kendi, a forefather of this 1619 initiative, quote, "The only solution for past discrimination is present discrimination, and the only solution for present discrimination is future discrimination." Close quote. I think we can all agree that this language is retaliatory, vengeful, and it ultimately condones the use of discrimination. condones the use of discrimination. This will do nothing but perpetuate the race crisis instead of giving to it the decisive end it deserves. When you put kids of all colors on a playground, their first instinct is to play together, to intermingle, and to have a good time. Kids do not see color. What these curriculums do is make kids see color. It makes kids have a hyper fixation on race. When they are taught in schools, critical race theory and the 1619 Project are fundamental breaches of the First Amendment of the Constitution, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, and the equal protection clause under the Fourteenth Amendment. The First Amendment not only guarantees free speech, but it prohibits the compelling of speech upon another. When kids are forced to acknowledge or affirm these controversial concepts in class such as privilege, culpability, and identity, it constitutes the direct definition of compelled speech. The Civil Rights Act outlaws discrimination in any form against any person of any condition, directly opposite of what the founders of CRT are pushing in schools. If we want to move forward to a more wholesome future where everyone accepts each other, acknowledges, and supports one another, then we have to stick to the fundamentals of the Constitution that guarantees life, liberty, property, and the pursuit of happiness under God. We need to reunite families and promote the importance of family in school. We need to encourage dignity instead of using CRT to degrade it. We need to seek truth and encourage critical debate instead of promoting critical race. It's time that we make and take a hard stance and say no to allowing CRT to penetrate our schools and say yes to returning to normalcy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Next speaker is Kelly Dilven. Dilven. Kelly Dilven.
Good evening. Let me start this by saying that we are all operating under a false premise for this conversation about masks in general, and especially masks for our children. Why is this, you may ask yourself? This is, it's because all of our health institutions in this country have told us this is the best way to prevent transmission of COVID. This is where we have to use deduction, reasoning, and past data on this subject. In 2015, a randomized control trial conducted in Vietnam using healthcare workers showing that wearing cloth masks actually increased the chances for those, increased chances for those wearing masks to actually have the disease. Study also found that medical masks, even with proper PPE handling, made no difference in infection rates in wearing these masks compared to the controlled group of no face coverings. The only masks that were successful in stopping any sort of transmission were N95 masks, for which the healthcare workers are required to take an entire class in medical school dedicated to learning the technique of handling and fitting these masks. Another random trial, randomized control trial in Denmark showed no statistical difference in infection rates between the masked and unmasked. Less than three months ago, the CDC published a relatively ignored study of COVID-19 transmission in US schools, conducted that while masking the then-unvaccinated teachers and imposing ventilation, improving ventilation was associated with lower levels of virus transmission in school. Social distancing, classroom barriers, HEPA filters, and forcing students to wear masks did not result in a statistically significant benefit. It's not just the CDC study. There are no studies that show conclusively that kids wearing masks in school have any effect on their own morbidity or morbidity on help or hospitalization and death rate in the community around them. So somebody else talked about an analogy. Wanted, I wanted to present my own. Actually, it's one I've seen on the internet. If it's raining outside, why should my child have to wear a raincoat to keep your child from getting wet? Makes no sense. Thank you.
Next speaker, Kelly Simon. Kelly Simon.
Good evening. My five-year-old son, who supposedly had his bus dismissal tag checked twice today on the sixth day of school and taking the bus, was placed on the wrong bus home without his nine-year-old sister, who is his designated student. My daughter got off the bus hysterical at 2:25 because her little brother was not there with her. The bus driver checked the bus for him at his bus stop when I asked for him to no avail. I immediately drove to Oakview Elementary. Upon arrival, I was told that due to a shortage of staff today, specifically four teacher absences, they may have missed it. It sometimes happens, and they apologized. Five minutes later, the principal came to tell me that was not true at all. I find this very hard to believe. Both my son's teacher and her helper were out today, so that accounts for some of these absences. The principal then went on to say that he went on my children's bus after dismissal and asked for my son. My daughter raised her hand. The principal then exited the bus. My son was driven into school late today because he had a dentist appointment, and there was no way of my nine-year-old daughter knowing whether or not he was in school or should have even been on the bus, nor is it her responsibility. The principal, in a very condescending tone, then explained tag-checking procedures to me. He explained that there would never be a time when my five-year-old son would have been let off at another bus stop. I do not believe this is true at all because the same procedure is used getting on the bus as is getting off of the bus. It did not prevent staff or bus drivers from allowing my five-year-old onto the wrong bus. The procedure currently being used to put five-year-old kindergarteners on and off buses is clearly not working. My son, who already had anxieties about taking the bus, felt safe with his sister. He had ridden the bus for five days and was still very nervous boarding in the morning. He was returned to me after an entire bus route was completed at 3:03. He was on the wrong bus for 50 minutes. He was brought to me in the front office by the principal, crying, scared, with a runny nose. He ran to me. He immediately told me he hates school and will never go back. Needless to say, him and his sister will never be taking the bus again and will be driven back and forth to school by myself starting tomorrow. I'm very disappointed in the current system, and I request that a change be made to prevent loss children from happening again in the future. Upon leaving a review on the Greenville Board of Education website, I noticed that my son is not the only kid that's been lost in the past two weeks. This is completely unacceptable. Please make the changes regarding the tag-checking and bus procedures as soon as possible, especially for these five-year-old kindergarteners. It is not a five-year-old child's responsibility to get home safely. Parents put our trust in the school district to ensure our children make it home. The current system in place will get your child home sometimes, but other times, they just might lose them. And give you excuses with a smiling face. What happened today is inexcusable. Nobody should be worried about losing their child while they're in the hands and the responsibility of the Greenville School District. I'd also like to add my gratitude for you for all keeping those sweat rags off my kids' faces. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alicia Simmons.
Hello, I'm Melissa, and I'm a fourth grader at Oakview. I moved to South Carolina last summer and started third grade in the virtual program. Halfway through the year, I was able to switch to in-person at Oakview. I wore a mask on the bus and in school every minute besides lunch. In May, we were finally able to take our masks off, three weeks of no masks and being a normal, happy kid. I was finally able to see my teacher's face and the faces of all my classmates. The masks were hard to breathe in, especially outside at recess and gym. Masks made my face sweat. Dirt and pollen would stick to my skin and make me break out and get itchy rashes. I tried different masks, but none of them were comfortable. They all came up too high and made my eyes water. To me, the best part about not wearing masks is being able to see faces. If I'm having a bad day, my teacher could see that, and my friend can ask me what's wrong. If my teacher is happy or stressed, we can see that and treat each other different. We can tell each other's emotions and help each other out. I felt more confident. My friends felt more confident. We could talk like regular kids without saying, "What did you say?" over and over again. I know that my little brother in 4K had a hard time learning letter sounds because he couldn't see his teacher's mouth. I helped him with letters and sounds at home when we read books together. I really hope the school lets us keep being happy, normal kids. We have over a 99% chance of surviving COVID if we even get it. The masks only help the adults feel safer when they can just get the vaccine if they want to. I don't want to be a part of this experiment. I'm supposed to take tests in school and not be a part of a test. If we have to wear masks in school again, I will have to be homeschooled. I will really miss my friends, but I would be much more happy to never wear a mask again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Next speaker. I'm afraid you didn't make a stab to the name. I'm sorry. Liz? How do you pronounce your last name?
Leo Kovac.
Thank you.
Good evening. If you truly care about children and their welfare, please do not mandate masking them. This is no longer about COVID. Schools and childcare settings are not spreaders of SARS-CoV-2 virus. Supporters of masks claim they save lives and stop COVID-19 virus. Yet thousands of scientists, medical professionals, and epidemiologists have been accumulating data that masks can be harmful both short-term and long-term. As parents, we have seen our children suffering from not being able to breathe freely, under face masks, headaches, bad acne, cognitive fog, and depression. There are many studies proving masks are harmful, and therefore, this school board should not mandate that our children wear them, especially since the risk of children suffering from severe COVID-19 are extremely low. According to dozens of studies, masks do have harmful side effects. Let's take a closer look at some of the worst side effects of mask-wearing in children. Psychological harm. Younger children feel like they are full of germs and everyone else is full of germs. Extended mask-wearing has shown to have detrimental psychological harms tied to lack of facial and emotional signaling. Another report found that wearing a mask longer than four hours a day decreases cognitive precision, increases headaches and sweating, and encourages dehydration, increasing bacterial infection risk. Physical harm. Medical masks raise carbon dioxide levels in the blood. The main symptom of carbon dioxide toxicity includes headaches and confusion, sweating, increased heart rate and blood pressure, tremors, shortness of breath, reduced hearing, and dimmed sight. Masks suppress the immune system. Masks are the largest attack on the immune system. Increased disease risk. Masks collect and colonize viruses, bacteria, microbes, and mold, germs that would normally be allowed to float away, dry out, and die. Masking increases the risk of strep throat outbreak in schools. A caution of some scientists on the use of cloth masks was issued due to poor filtration and risk of infection. Fact, masks increase viral load and increase severity of disease. Masks cannot prevent illness because they trap exhaled viral particles. When the mask becomes contaminated with viruses, the trapping, rebreathing, and increasing pathogen load delivered to the lungs becomes dangerous. Further, masks increase the incidences of dental cavities, inflamed gums, and bad breath, otherwise known as masked mouth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Susanna Sarvea.
Hello, everyone. Um, I want to say that masks is not one size fits all solution. Think about the children that have asthma problems. Why you want to mask them when they need air to breathe? Think about the kids that have autism. Why you want to damage them psychologically even more? You know, I remember Bush signed a mandate, "No Kid Left Behind." You're going to favor one side over the other? That's not right. If parents want to afraid, they should keep their kids at home or figure something that those parents that want to have masks can go to a school with masks. Nobody wants to stop them from their rights. But I don't want you to violate the rights of my grandchildren. And I'm telling you, we are demanding our rights based on the US Constitution. To make, we want to make the proper choices for our kids. But sending them to school wearing a mask for eight hours every day, I call it child abuse. Just because people believe something will work doesn't make it true. Where are the peer-reviewed studies? I have yet to see one. Why are people saying protect our kids, but can't give us a concrete evidence? How is it safe for our kids to be covered thus impending their oxygen to their brain, heart, lungs, for eight hours a day? Didn't you know that three minutes after the mask is placed, O2 flow decreases to the brain and heart, causing irreversible nerve damage to those kids? Not to mention the headaches, the dizziness, they can concentrate, fatigue, anxiety, depression. We just heard their kid, seven years old, calling because they want to commit suicide. Please hear them out. You know, it's this ridiculous restriction. Suicide rates increase. Our legislators made a provision to ban mask mandates. I urge you to please to obey the rules for our kids' sake. Let them breathe freely. Let them have a child who they can remember. Let them live free. You know, you are here to serve and to help. The children are the future. If you hurt the children, there is no future for America.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Ann Coleman.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Coleman. I'm the mother of three adult children and a gray mother to seven grands that attended or attends the Greenville County schools. I've come here tonight to thank you, all of you, for dropping the mask mandate, or as I'd like to put it, using your common sense. Speaking of senses, there are five of them: sight, smell, hearing, taste, and touch. Children use all of these faculties to make sense of their world. They learn their language skills from watching a teacher's lips and listening to the inflection in their voice as they pronounce words. Children sense a person's attitude or mood by watching their face and body language. Hiding a person's face with a mask disguises all those cues that speak volumes to the child developing their language skills. If I spoke tonight with a mask, would you hear my words clearly? Would you understand the inflections in my voice? Would you be sensitive to the emotion I'm trying to convey? I think not. We know with experience now that it is truly is hard to breathe wearing a mask. We are breathing in expelled carbon dioxide when both our nose and mouth are covered. How is that working for people? How about the children not being able to breathe in oxygen most of the learning day? How alert can they be when they can't breathe, can't hear the spoken word, nor they can't see mouth movements for enunciation purposes? see mouth movements for enunciation purposes? Clearly, this is not an optimum learning experience. When asked how was school with a mask, my grandson Liam said, "It was great. I'm not sweating. It grosses me out." When I have to put my mask back on after eating and all the Doritos spit is in my mask? Yuck. Lily said, "I like seeing my teacher and friends smiling again." My other grands said they could hear what the teacher is saying much better without the plexiglass and masks over their faces. Last year was a learning curve. We took away the plexiglass, realizing the virus circulates freely in the air and the glass creates reflection so that children had a difficult time seeing and hearing their teachers and classmates. Oh, here's what I'll say, and you have it all. I implore you, do no harm. Our children have fallen behind emotionally and psychologically. We need to continue on this path of sensible decision making. Thank you and God bless you.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Catherine Schumacher.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Schumacher. I'm president and CEO of Public Education Partners and a parent of a middle school and a high school student here in Greenville County Schools. I want to take a moment this evening to say a few words about excellence and what it takes to sustain in a large, complex, and diverse community such as ours. A couple of weeks ago, a colleague and I had the privilege of standing in front of the 300-plus first-year Greenville County Schools teachers to hand out our annual first-class teacher awards. These awards celebrate extraordinary educators who have just finished their first year in the classroom. And the idea is to inspire our newest teachers by celebrating those who were in their shoes just a year ago, facing the same pressures and uncertainties about starting a new career. We also met members of this year's Greenville Alternative Teacher Education Program, or GATE, cohort made up of GATE career changers and others who felt called to the classroom even though they didn't pursue a traditional pathway into the field. This year's GATE program includes 53 educators, by far the largest group in its six-year history. I want to celebrate these new teachers tonight because of who they are: creative, passionate folks who are willingly stepping into a classroom for the very first time at a moment when it is arguably harder to be a teacher than ever before. We owe these new teachers. We owe them gratitude, and we owe them support. But more than that, as a community, we owe them a commitment to continue to center the qualities and values that made Greenville County Schools such an excellent district, the kind of district where the best teachers choose to come time and again. As one of Greenville County Schools' longstanding community partners, Pep is willing to make that commitment to cooperation and collaboration, to listening to and learning from each other, to centering best practices and evidence-based decision-making. I ask everyone in this community to take a breath and recommit to doing the same. All of those new teachers, indeed every single teacher in our district, deserve no less because when we have the best teachers, our students will thrive. In closing, we want to thank all of the trustees and our district administration for the tireless work that you all have been doing and continue to do on behalf of our students, teachers, and families. We are so grateful, and I say that both professionally and personally as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Next speaker is Dylan Phillips. Excuse me. What was it? Phillipsy, okay.
Hi, my name is Dylan Phillipsy. My daughters are students at Summer Drive Elementary School, and I'm an emergency department physician. I'm here to speak in favor of a simple requirement to wear masks in schools and buildings, like this one. COVID spreads inside where people are talking. It spreads when you breathe in the air that somebody else breathed out. Masks make it spread less, and they work when everyone's wearing a mask. I worked through the COVID pandemic with masks of lower quality than this one. I didn't get sick being in these rooms because I was wearing a mask, and that's the only real defense I had. They aren't perfect, but this has to be defense in layers: seatbelts, and speed limits, and drunk driving laws. That's what we need to hear. Failing to require masks will mean COVID spreads more through schools. That makes kids sick, and that means our schools a negative factor in our community's health. And that doesn't have to be that way. I've heard a lot of arguments against masks. I don't fly any one of them, other than some minor discomfort, and everyone can learn to be over that. I guarantee you, it would be more traumatic to a student who have a dead parent, loved one, or teacher than to ever wear a mask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Phillipsy. Next speaker is Hunter Moore.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Appreciate all y'all being here. And I also just want to, I'm a pediatrician, so I just want to say to Luca and Alicia, that was amazing. Really, really cool to see kids speaking in front of a board, so that was really, really awesome. So I am here again to speak on behalf of mask mandates. I'm a pediatrician in the community. I've served the city of Greenville as a pediatrician for about eight years now. I have heard a lot of scientific arguments presented tonight. I would just like to state my credentials. I have a four-year degree in biological sciences from Clemson University. I have a four-year medical degree. I spent three years as a pediatric resident, working in the hospitals, taking care of sick children. And I am a board-certified pediatrician with five years of experience in the community. I know infectious disease fairly well. I'm not an infectious disease expert. And I've talked with some of you already on the phone, and I appreciate each of you all's time in speaking with me. I'm also the author of a petition that has been signed by almost 1,500 physicians across the state of South Carolina urging Governor McMaster and the state legislature to repeal the budget proviso that is currently preventing you all from following the science. We are continuing to work with the legislature to try to have this proviso repealed so that you guys can listen to the scientists. But I'm asking you tonight that even though that stands in place, there have been your colleagues in Charleston County and Richland County who have ignored that and have went ahead and done a mask mandate. I ask you to do that today. I ask you to have the courage to do that today. Real quick, I'd just like to let you know, there's about 76,000 students in Greenville County Schools. Current data, current studies would show that by the end of the semester, about 70% of those would become infected with COVID by the end of the semester. That's about 50,000 students. And the current fatality rate for pediatrics is about 1 in 10,000. So that would be about five children over the semester that could potentially die from COVID. There's also longstanding problems that come from COVID, like MIS-C and other long-term issues. I ask you, how many lives are worth it? Is it worth it to mask an entire county to save five lives? I would say that it is. I also heard lots of folks saying that masks don't work. There's about 65 studies on the CDC website and recent studies by Duke that would say that that's false. I also heard gentlemen say that there are no pediatric patients in the hospital right now, and the pediatric hospitalists have sent you that information. There are currently several pediatric patients in the hospital.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
I see you.
Thank you.
Do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Kimmack.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Linda Stokes Kimmack, and I'm a parent of two children. One attends a private school that addresses dyslexia, and the other is a Greenville County school attendee. Tonight, I had the chance to go to my son's open house and meet his teachers, but I felt that this meeting was way more important. So thank you for letting me speak. I'm an early childhood educator and a small business owner in the community. I've lived in Greenville for 20 years, and I love it here. I tell people I wasn't born here, but I will die here one day. This is my home. I am so proud of the city, its community, its thriving downtown, its economy, and it's a stable area. We clearly are a leader and a cornerstone of our state. We have the largest school system in the state, yet I don't feel we're being a real leader. We are the big guy in the room. We are the ones who should be setting the example, not lagging behind Columbia and Charleston, who have stood up for their students, teachers, and school staff by making a school mask mandate. They've done the right thing in putting the health of their constituents at the forefront of education. We should have been the first school district to say that this budget proviso is not protecting our children. We're leaders. Greenville community is a cornerstone. We know that masks protect against infection. Experts have been telling this to the public for a year and a half. Why else do the doctors and nurses wear them in operating rooms? They perform long surgeries successfully, and they don't faint, or make poor judgments, or mess up because they're wearing masks. They've been wearing them for years. It keeps them safe. Greenville County School System touches approximately 86,000 children and employees. So if these school members have parents, grandparents, and younger siblings in the house, so if you kind of estimate, and I had to come up with some kind of formula, that there's one family member per one child in school, then this means approximately 162,000 people in Greenville County are touched by our school system. And I'm not an economist or math, you know, or math major, so I just came up with an average. So with our population of 571,000, this means Greenville County Schools is touching 25% to 30% of our entire county. You all have that responsibility of, and that opportunity to keep 30, 25% to 30% of our whole county safe by having a mask mandate. We're in a pandemic, and we're approaching crisis. It spreads more easily.
Thank you, Ms. Kimmack.
I support repealing the mask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Cothran.
I am Susan Cothran. I moved here about five and a half years ago because my grandson was being born, and he now attends Armstrong Elementary. I have lots of interest in this issue. I know you've all read and heard these arguments on both sides. I'm here to speak about something else, and that's vaccines. Vaccines are the number-one thing that will help us get over the COVID pandemic. We now have, that's what the science says. And we now have a vaccine that's FDA-approved. Thank you, God. And I would like to have you encourage, urge all teachers and staff to get immunized as quickly as possible and to facilitate that in whatever way you can. I still have a few seconds. Until that is possible, to have, first of all, I'll say that you know that there is evidence that we have vaccine mandates, so I don't have to tell you that about other vaccines. But meanwhile, let's get them tested. There are tests readily available, both for students to administer themselves or for teachers or staff to administer. If we can get them tested, we can't stop the initial spread, but we can stop it from continuing to spiral out of control. So those are my two requests. And then I have one question. First of all, let's encourage and urge vaccinations. Second, let's urge and encourage testing. And I know you're pulled back and forth, but what are you going to do? You know, the governor tells you you can't do this, and the legislature tells you you can't do that. There are numerous mitigation strategies. What are you going to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cothran. I would ask you, audience, to, if you don't disagree with the speakers, keep your comments to yourself. Let's hear everybody through, okay? We'll get through this. Next speaker is Dr. Michael Fields.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Mike Fields, and I am a pediatric pulmonologist here with Prismus Children's Hospital here in the upstate in Greenville. I care for patients ranging from newborn to early twenties with various breathing problems, obviously. All of them are at increased risk for difficulties with COVID-19. I have seen a steep rise in cases in our practice and in our hospital in the past few weeks. There are more children sick than earlier in the pandemic, and these children are much sicker. Our Children's Hospital was at about 99% capacity as of this morning. Our intensive care unit has several COVID-19 patients. These patients are sicker than they were. We did not have this a year ago. I'm very concerned about the spread of this disease in our community for a few reasons and feel that we need to enhance our prevention measures, including requiring a mask for all who enter the school building or ride on a school bus. Last year, our school year went remarkably smoothly. There was a layered approach to protecting the children tailored by each school district and by each and every school. Some had plexiglass, others had one-way hallways, while others changed the lunch schedule. Our county required use of face masks. Together, these measures kept our children safe in school. You have the data. I'm sure you've seen it just like I have. The data does not lie. This year, despite a years more experience and the availability of a very safe and extremely effective vaccine, our children are much less safe. While the governor and state legislature have prevented the use of masks, we have also abandoned the other measures which provided protection last year. I could quote you research studies or explain the nuances of viral transmission, but concrete data and opinions based upon years of study and experience at the bedside of hundreds of patients seem to be dismissed without a second thought. The issue of mask usage and other precautions have been framed around personal freedom and parental choice. I would like to say very clearly that someone's right to their own choice ends when that choice puts others at risk. Currently, those advocating against use of masks and against vaccines are putting my children at risk. Why do they have the right to put my children at risk? Our teachers and school leadership have done an incredible job trying to educate our children for the past 18 months. Your job is to help create the environment that makes their jobs possible. Please consider making the changes we will need in order for this school year to continue in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fields. Thank you. Next speaker. Our next speaker is Tina Ballinger. Ballinger, yes.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all your patience and kindness in letting us come forward. I am aware of personal sacrifice for the education of your children. I raised my children in California. Liberal Democratic stronghold of schools indoctrinated in anti-American philosophies full of compromise and communism. As a Christian mother, I didn't have the money. My husband was in law enforcement, and we lived broke, paycheck broke. So I drove around without a car. I didn't have a car. I had to beg friends to take me to Bible studies. So I know what it's like to sacrifice personally, to give up a nice house and a nice car and all the things America strives for because I care about my kids and I cared about their future. I homeschooled my kids using Bob Jones textbooks. I went to homeschooling symposiums and learned about how to teach. And you know what? I'm one of those people everybody hates to show up. I'm not well-edged. I'm not well-educated. I'm not rich. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a scientist. I'm just a grandma of six grandkids that are my kids have had to pull their kids out of school and homeschool them. I don't have a single child that still has children in school. My grandkids got pulled out of school last year. They were in Greenville County. And they're home this year with their mom, without a mask on their face, living life like kids should, running around, breathing fresh air, learning how to communicate with people from all walks of life. It's obvious that the Delta variant, the first variant, was never proved. Scientific stuff that's never been isolated, masks, random distancing. Why was it six foot instead of three foot? Masks that have boxes that tell you they don't work for anything. And they're selling this all to us as if we're so stupid, we're gonna believe it. But our constitution, both nationally at the United States level as well as in this state, says that all the power to govern is with us, me, the idiot nobody wants to show up that has too much to say. That the power lies with us, the people. Nobody has the right to tell us that you're smarter or wiser or better. And so, you're gonna tell me what to do, what to wear, what to put on my kid's face, when I can take it off? I can't even go into the store in the mall without someone running me down, and I'm a disabled American veteran. I can't put that thing on my face. I fought in the Army, and I have a disability. And I can't go into the Apple Store after spending $1,000 to change my phone out because they demand that I put on a face mask. The power is expressly left with we, the people. It isn't with any board or anything. What we have witnessed in America and the United States is a tyrannical overreach of government authority, and I want to thank each one of you for obeying our governor.
Our next speaker is Jordan Hilsström.
Thank you for your service. I guess she's gone. I hope she can hear me. I also am a veteran. Three combat tours, spent five years as a law enforcement officer. My wife and I moved here from Washington last October. We lived there for 12 years. We were foster parents. We were well-connected in the community we lived in. The unfortunate part was many businesses that we served as part of my business were being shut down because of arbitrary rules and data and science that were being thrown around like candy with no merit anymore. We decided, you know what? We're not gonna let some dictator from a decree dictate what we're gonna do from now on. So, we moved to a state. We did our research. We found a state that we love. We love South Carolina. Greenville is thriving. Our research for the next 10 years from my business perspective was a good move, not just for my business, but for my family. The last time I let the military slash the government dictate my health, I was put in the ICU. I remember sitting there, coming in out of consciousness. My doctor thought I was out. He sat in a meeting with four qualified people. I respect doctors. I really do. I respect science, true science, not manipulated by a weaponized system of politics. That said, I sat there in my deathbed. My mom behind me, she almost lost her other kid to an IED in Iraq the year prior. I get emotional because this stuff affects our lives. It affects our kids. We have two adopted boys that we love. We truly do. When I sat there on that deathbed and watched these qualified doctors argue over what they should do with my health, because I was in a civilian hospital, but he didn't have authority over what to do. He wanted to do something that my mom wanted to do, but she didn't have the authority because I was government property at that time. So, they argued over who had the right rank, the right rank, not the qualifications, to tell me and my doctor what I should be taking. So, they gave me the medication, and I sat there. My lungs collapsed. Put on a ventilator, and then my heart stopped. At the end of the day, it was the government that was telling me what to do with my body. I didn't have a say. And quite frankly, I was too frail. The people that loved me, they didn't have a say either. At the end of the day, we have to stand up for, I'm not a doctor. I don't know, these little masks I brought, I don't know where it is just because I thought I had to wear it. This little Etsy cool little thing, it doesn't, are we kidding ourselves? If we wanna do it, let's put a full gown on. It's actually gonna protect us. Let's get serious with this. At the end of the day, I don't know medicine, but I am a fighter for freedom. And if we don't stand up for this now, what's next? What's the next thing they're gonna take from us? And I'm not fighting the science. I'm not a scientist. But I do know this, when Fauci switches from one date to the next, he tells us to wear a mask, and he goes to a ballgame, and this mask is like this. It's off the side of his face. This is a daily occurrence. Politicians on news tell us to wear a mask. And guess what? The Colbert Show at late night behind the scenes, they're hobnobbing up and dancing with each other with no masks on. Don't tell me this is not political. It's garbage. It's garbage. It is political. And I'm sorry, I get emotional. This means a lot to me. I do appreciate every one of you, what you do. Education is so important to us. I believe it's the future of our country, and we need facilitators and educators and administrators like yourself.
Next speaker is April Richardson, maybe?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have two grade school children in Greenville County School. As a mother, a community member, and a physician, I choose to speak here tonight to encourage the board to listen to the health experts and the CDC. The recommendations of the CDC, South Carolina DHEC, and an endless list of other physician organizations is that all individuals should wear masks while indoor. Some say this should be an individual choice. But COVID is a pandemic, and we need to make public health decisions, not individual health decisions. Between the students and the staff, over 80,000 people in our county spend most of their waking hours in these schools. We have to think about the greater good and make that environment safe. I understand the argument made in the work session earlier tonight about losing funding. However, other school districts in our state have already mandated masks. There's power in numbers, and as the largest district in the state, we should lead by example, listen to our experts, and make the safest decision for our children. Mask mandates for all students and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Our next speaker is Lenley Lamp.
I like British stuff. I like the history. I like tea parties. I love Downton Abbey. I even like how they drive on the wrong side of the road. I wish I could drive on the wrong side of the road, but I can't here. I mean, technically, I have the freedom to do that, but if I did, there would be dire consequences. Following traffic laws is not about personal choice. Freedom doesn't mean doing something because you can. Freedom comes with responsibility for your actions and your care for others. Tonight, we need a call to action to protect our children. A highly contagious disease is running rampant through our community, and a simple way to protect ourselves and others is to cover our nose and our mouth with a piece of cloth. And yet somehow, we are arguing that this act of caring for our neighbor takes away our freedom. I don't understand what the so-called freedom is that's being taken away. As a parent, it feels like the freedom that is being limited is someone else's ability, their right, I guess, to infect my child with this disease. This is a public health emergency. It's public, public, which means it is not about private, personal freedoms. I keep hearing that parents know what's best for their children. And as a parent, I can say a lot of the times, I don't know what's best for my children. If parents truly and consistently always knew it was best for our children, they wouldn't ever be injured in a car accident. They wouldn't ever have child abuse. We wouldn't have obese children. Parents often need rules and guidance to help raise their little ones. That's why we have laws around car seats, around safety, around abuse, and child nutrition. As a health coach, my area of expertise is assisting my patients in identifying barriers to help behavior change and then guiding them to start new healthy habits. And I often hear people say, I know what I need to do, but I can't make myself do it. And I'll tell you, those people who are the most successful and are the ones that we have in the field of health promotion, they have their aha moment. And often, this moment is when someone close to them experiences a serious health issue, and then they are finally motivated to take care of their health. In Exodus, Moses asks and pleads with Pharaoh to free the Israelites, and over and over, Pharaoh refuses. And if you think about what happened, finally, his son died, and that was Pharaoh's aha moment. And unfortunately, some people will not be motivated to act against COVID until they are personally impacted. I should not have to wait for someone else's aha moment before they protect my children. And this is why we need rules in place for prevention. The seatbelt doesn't work after you go through the windshield. I encourage the board to think creatively and aggressively how to get masks in our schools for the safety of children, not to stomp on the so-called freedom of others. I would encourage you to move beyond the mantra of our hands are tied to the how can we make this happen battle cry? Because right now, there are the parents of a sick child being pulled by a doctor. My hands are tied. There's nothing more we can do, and I'm sorry for your loss. Let's all pair up each other and drive on the right side of the road.
Our next speaker is Sam Young.
Hello. I am here tonight because I wanted to see if everyone here was aware of something that is on the CDC website that's called shielding approach to prevent COVID-19 infections. And it is basically, the CDC is considering what is called the shielding approach to prevent COVID-19. It is a plan to shut down schools and to use them as camps to physically isolate men, women, and children. Now, we know that concentration camps were something that the Nazis did, but it can come here at any moment, and we need to be aware that they can call it something other than a concentration camp. Concentration camp can be disguised as something like a green zone. The plan is to take, the plan talks about the loss of freedoms and personal interactions. It talks about taking children away from their parents, families away from each other, and separating everyone by genders. My question is, will the school board comply to the CDC shielding approach, aka concentration camps, now being renamed as green zones? And if you want a copy, I'll be more than happy to give you one to look into, to do your own research on, to see what you think about it, because it is everyone's personal rights, what you think. And it is, laws can always give us freedoms, but they can always take away our freedoms too. And this right here could possibly take away everyone's freedom and their families from each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next speaker is Jim Soter. Jim Soter, Soter. Nope. Okay.
Hi. This is actually a statement I'm reading from a nurse that worked at a COVID unit. He couldn't be here, so he just kinda typed out a statement. So, I want to read that from him. "I have been a registered nurse for 31 years, spending 18 of those years in pulmonary lungs and telemetry, cardiac monitoring. During 2020, I worked COVID units often, and from January 2021 to April 2021, was a full-time COVID nurse. My patients were adults approximately 55 years and older with COVID. Since March 2020, I have not cared for any pediatric patients with COVID and was not aware of any pediatric or patients admitted for COVID at the facilities at which I worked." Now, my son, on the other hand, and his wife, they are COVID nurses in a hospital in Texas, and I just asked them if there were any kids with COVID, and they said no kids have been admitted with COVID. And they've been admitted for some of the stuff like cystic fibrosis and everything, but no COVID. So, about the mask. The simple flu mask does not prevent transmission of viruses. The simple flu mask does not create a seal around the nose and mouth, therefore allowing airborne particles to escape. To mandate a flu mask is giving false assurance to the wearer. This is why nurses who care for COVID patients are required to wear a professionally fitted N95 mask. If needed, the nurse may instead wear a paper suit, which resembles a beekeeper's helmet and suit. This suit provides filtered air to the nurse and protects the nurse from exposure. Again, the simple flu mask, homemade mask, gator, whatever it is, does not provide the protection needed. And unless the N95 masks are professionally fitted and kept in place at all times, exposures will occur. Numerous studies have shown the ineffectiveness and also the potential bacterial hazards of wearing a mask continuously. The CDC also, with other medical institutions, have completed several studies revealing the ineffectiveness of masks. Please check the website of the CDC and search mask results. Please also research. Dr. Carey Mullis developed the PCR test and its correct use, which was not used as a diagnosis tool since it cannot diagnose a virus. These tests have been manipulated and used incorrectly for personal gain. Research the change in the PCR cycling back in January 2021. Cases of COVID dropped at least 30% when the PCR test was cycled correctly. The threshold cycle went from 38 to 30 to 24 to 15 to 8 to 3. Three COVID patients in our COVID unit, from February 25th till I left, April 3rd, COVID never came back until Delta. Could it be the PCR test? We had no flu last year. What happened? Wow, COVID must have taken care of the flu. I also witness whenever the $50 billion contract starts to dwindle between WHO, FDA, CDC, and DHEC with big pharma vaccine companies, the threshold cycle is increased from 28 to 38.
Our next speaker is Crystal Neerman. Crystal Neerman.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and I know you guys are faced with a really difficult decision today. I want to talk about the immune system, but before I start, my name is Crystal Neerman. I am a mom of four kids, nine and under, one of which who says she can't breathe with the mask on and gets lightheaded and gets headaches. I also want to say that I'm a small business owner, and I'm also a child advocate on the South Carolina Human Trafficking Task Force Subcommittee, and volunteering was switched to do prevention on sex trafficking and sexual exploitation. So, I want to talk about the immune system and mask wearing. We know the immune system's job is to fight infection. It does this once it defeats something by remembering it and refighting it or being better equipped to fight it faster or just not let it bother the person. But to do this, it needs the proper vitamins and nutrients. It also needs good bacteria and germs to do this. Our immune system is cultivated by good bacteria. Increased mask wearing in children harms them because they trap all of that bad bacteria in there, re-breath it, and get infected with secondary infections that can lead them to hospitalizations, not COVID. Children can be educated on better nutrition in the school system. When my kids are in the school system, they have been homeschooled because my daughter can't wear a mask. When my kids were in the school system, they were offered candy as incentives. In the lunchroom, they were offered unhealthy snacks and choices to choose. In first and third grade, they were allowed to choose their lunches. And of course, they're not gonna choose vegetables and proteins. They're gonna choose the snacks and sweets and fruits. If we can't get our kids to eat proper foods in the classroom and at school, how are we gonna set their bodies up for the strength it needs to protect them from the germs and bad pathogens that are out there? The good bacteria needs these nutrients and vitamins to protect itself. So, what do kids need? They need to be educated about proper eating techniques, healthy eating, healthy lifestyle choices, exercise. They need fresh air and vitamin D3 that can only be get, the best way to get it, I should say, is through the sun, not through supplements. Increased water intake. Little things like this can be easily understood by children when they are taught in a way that they understand, and then they can be empowered to protect themselves and strengthen their immune systems to fight pathogens like COVID that has not been affecting our children. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Neerman. Our next speaker is April Richardson, maybe? Thank you, Ms. Neerman. Our next speaker is Dr. Crystal Wall O'Connor.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Crystal Wall O'Connor, former school board trustee from District 28 and most recently from District 27. Last year at this time, the district worked to keep our students as safe as we could with COVID at high levels in our community. With the thoughtful and clear support of the board, Dr. Royster and his staff implemented heroic measures to protect students and staff, always relying on guidance from the experts. This year, we're facing a more contagious variant, one more likely to harm children. I know we're all glad that students are back in school for in-person learning, but I'm sad and afraid for our students and their families that we have far fewer protections for them now than we had last year. Also this year, the governor has taken away our right to implement the mask wearing policy we managed successfully last year, even at the behest of some who have not yet experienced the long-term work it takes to maintain local control for school boards. I'd like to offer my support and encouragement to each of you to continue your fierce advocacy for student safety and for local school board authority to set policy. I encourage you both to advocate against the General Assembly's mandate and to do everything in our power to keep children safe while complying with it. We need to look no further than Pickens County to see what can happen quickly without protective measures. We've never been stopped before in our ability to fight for what we believe to be in the best interest of children. There are so many powerful leaders and decision-makers and parents and educators in this room. I ask you to consider, what can I do and do it as if your, as if our children and teachers' health and even lives depend on it? Are we advocating to reverse the General Assembly's mandate? Are we taking a leadership role within the School Board Association to advocate for the importance of local school board control? Are we using our leadership communications and advocacy platforms and individual voices to educate the public about our concerns and to make recommendations despite the fact that it is politically difficult to do so? As a district, are we doing all we can? Will you stop allowing visitors during this risky time or at least mandate that they wear masks? Will you exhort all employees to wear masks? Will you enforce social distancing? Will you not host optional gatherings and events? Will you stagger class changes, arrivals and dismissals to have less congested hallways? Will you consider vaccination incentives for staff as other districts reported in Ed Week, including Anderson Five are doing? Will you follow the guidance of American Association for Pediatrics, especially as related to those children who are too young to be vaccinated? Will you work to limit the effects that politics have on matters of student and staff health? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phil. Our time has come. We've got one more speaker. I'd like to say that after that speaker concludes, the board's gonna take a five-minute recess so we can get a little break. And y'all have a great evening. Our next speaker is Jonas Brown.
I stand before you tonight as a parent, a father, a member of this community, but more importantly, as a human being. A human being who has been instructed, like everyone else, to mask up, socially distance, close down, and shelter in place. That we should all do our part to flatten the curve. Remember that? Wasn't too long ago, was it? What came next was Operation Warp Speed. And we were told to go get the so-called vaccine. After the shots, we were told we could remove the mask and return it normal. You will be immune to the virus. You remember that? I sure do. What happened? Now, after just a few months, the shots that so many took are not stopping the virus. A booster has been introduced and finally a full approval by the FDA this week. This approval process has taken years to complete. Not this time. Humans are now used for the animal trials. And what about the long-term effects? Why is the vaccine package insert intention left blank? Why is the vaccine, why can't we know the ingredient list or be provided an independent study on efficacy? How can these jabs be deemed safe and effective? That's all we hear from the media, on the TV, even on the radio advertisements. The so-called vaccine is safe and effective over and over and over. Repeat a lie often enough and people will believe it. Right? I'll let you look up that quote. Why hasn't Big Pharma explained all the VAERS data posted on the CDC website? Why are so many people dying within days of these injections? In 1976, the swine flu vaccine, fully approved, mind you, was responsible for less than 35 deaths before being deemed unsafe. Currently, COVID-19 vaccine deaths are in the tens of thousands just in the United States. How many more have to die? Do the words like my body, my choice, and informed consent mean anything anymore? These are all logical questions. But if we ask these questions, we are shut down, deplatformed, blocked, and silenced. We are no longer able to debate these facts and common sense has become extremely uncommon. We have all been instructed to wear a mask, get the shot, social distance, and follow unconstitutional mandates. And guess what? The virus is still here. Newsflash, the virus will always be here. The variants, that's the key fear word now. Variants and an invisible enemy, an enemy that can never be defeated.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, board.